Of allegiance. Okay, we're going to begin this evening with the county commissioners' meeting. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A call to order the May 14, 2025 county commissioners' meeting at 5:30 PM. First is announcements. The county commission meeting is being audio and video recorded. Next up is public comment for items not on the county agenda. We are also having select board public comment after the county commissioners' meeting. Is there any comments for county? Seeing none, I will close public comment. We have no new business I'm aware of, Erica? No. Number five is approval of minutes and warrants. Take a motion on approval of minutes for March 26, 2025, and payroll and treasury warrants.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Malcolm, second by Dawn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously. Next is official business. Request for approval and execution of memorandum of understanding for Sheep's Pond Road alternative access. Real estate specialist Tracy McDonald is here to present. Tracy?
Okay. Oh, yeah, I got to get really close.
They just turned it on.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm pleased to be here tonight to submit for approval and execution a memorandum of understanding between the County of Nantucket, the Town of Nantucket, Nantucket Conservation Foundation, and the 11 homeowners on Sheep Pond Lane collectively as the Sheep Pond residents. As shared with the county commissioners in previous presentations, the process to resolve access for the residents and reroute the roadway has been over several years with multiple steps and Mother Nature working against us. The town was able to negotiate a temporary easement for alternate access, which has required extension three times. The town was also able to negotiate an agreement with Nantucket Conservation Foundation for a permanent easement location for a new roadway in exchange for conveyance of paper roads and altar rock. However, due to Article 97 regulations, a home rule petition was required, which took three years to obtain the necessary legislation. Through diligent efforts of the town administration, town staff, town council, we have been able to work together with the homeowners, their council, and the Nantucket Conservation Foundation, sorry, through their council to come to this memorandum of understanding here before you tonight. This agreement memorializes the agreement of all the parties and with the homeowners for a betterment assessment for the costs associated with the project, an agreement for them to maintain the new roadway going forward at their own sole cost and expense. Nantucket Conservation Foundation and the Sheep Pond residents have executed the agreement and are in the stages of finalizing the permanent easement agreement shown on the plan, if Erica wants to bring that up. So I don't think you guys have seen this plan before because this is the final plan that I just got last week. There you go. So that will be the new roadway access going through the middle there. Attorney Vicky Marsh drafted and reviewed this agreement in conjunction with the other council, and she is going to speak now with respect to the betterment process for the agreement, followed by Jeff Carlson, who will speak about filing this agreement with natural heritage for the permit of the road construction, and then Drew Patnod of the DPW will be also able to speak regarding the roadway timeline, material, and construction process. Following, we will be happy to answer any questions that you may have in advance of your vote.
Thank you, Tracy. Attorney Marsh?
Good evening, everyone. I'm here to discuss the betterment process that is going to take place for the assessment of betterments for this roadway construction. After lengthy negotiations with the residents' attorneys, we've been able to arrive in an agreement in which they will be assessed betterments by the county, and they have agreed to pay the betterments out as assessed without any request for any abatements. General laws, Chapter 80, Section 1 authorizes the county to be able to assess betterments for public improvements which are benefiting a particular area that is not the community at large. In this case, this permanent access road is benefiting just the residents of Sheep Pond Road that are participating in this agreement and are not benefiting the public or any other residents that may choose to cross over this roadway. So therefore, this roadway will become a private way once it is fully constructed. The county commissioners will have to take a vote to assess the betterments to the residents for the construction costs of the road. And once that is done, they will be filing a betterment assessment statement with the Registry of Deeds. The betterment assessment statement includes a description of the area, which is going to be shown on a plan, and is going to also include an estimate of the betterment amounts that are going to be assessed upon each parcel of land in the area that is receiving the benefit. And this will need to be recorded at the Registry of Deeds within 90 days after the adoption of the order. In addition, within six months after the completion of the construction of the roadway, the county commissioners will determine the actual value of the benefit and the advantage to the land and assess upon each parcel a proportionate share of the cost of the improvements. So in this case, we deem that each of the property owners are going to be receiving the same benefit. They are going to all be receiving access over this particular roadway. So the betterment assessments will be in equal amounts to each of the residents. I should point out that the estimated assessments will not be the final amount, and in fact, the final amount will be determined within six months after the completion of the roadway. The costs of the betterment assessments can include the survey, permitting work, legal fees, recording costs, and so all of these additional costs need to be included with the actual construction costs for the roadway, and that will determine the amount of the betterment assessments. The lien for the betterments takes effect upon the recording of the betterment statement, and then it does not have a final amount to that betterment until six months after the completion of the project when we record and order. And then I should point out that the actual collection of the betterments doesn't take effect until the county commissioners certify to the town assessors the list of the assessments that are going to be assessed for each of the residents. And then the assessors, they are the actual ones that make the commitment of the assessments to the tax collector, who will then put these amounts onto the tax bills for each resident. So this process is not fully completed until the roadway is actually complete and the actual costs of the project are actually collected. So after approximately a year, usually the betterment assessments are actually shown on the tax bills, but it will depend upon the time of the year in which the assessments are actually going to be made for the yearly tax bill. So now I turn this over to Jeff Carlson, the Director of Natural Resources, to discuss the permitting that's involved in this project.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Just a quick update, there's not a lot of permitting involved with this project, and I apologize for not being there in person, but the permitting for this is really just related to Mass Natural Heritage, and we've been in contact with them for the last couple of years to go through what the plan was, and they're well aware of what's going on. We've really just been waiting on all of the easements and agreements to be put in place. That was a requirement that Natural Heritage had for us, and that obviously included what Drew will talk about next, the final construction specs that are going to go through the roadway for permitting. We're not anticipating a huge permitting hurdle with Natural Heritage. It should be pretty straightforward. We've been using someone to help us through that process, and we really believe the only real concerns are at the end, starting kind of closer to the Red Barn Road area, where there's some habitat questions there. That scrub oak that's out there shouldn't be a significant impact for us. So we're not anticipating a big time delay for Natural Heritage permitting, but it is the one permit that we need to get. And I'll turn it over to Drew.
Thanks, Jeff. So as you may remember from our previous presentation, varying levels of improvement were presented with estimated costs to the abutters. They preferred that we construct the most minimally improved roadway, which will include clearing and grubbing, basically just removing the vegetation, the roots and organic soil materials, and leaving a bare, generally natural roadway surface. As Vicky just mentioned as well, the long-term maintenance of the roadway will be the responsibility of the residents, so we'll be constructing the roadway to the specifications that they opted for. As Jeff mentioned, once the permitting is complete, we plan to engage a contractor to perform the work, ideally someone we already have under contract, so that we don't have to publicly bid and delay the start of construction. Another option is to have the DPW do the work. We are certainly more than capable of that, but with all the hats that we wear, it's a 20-foot-wide, 2,000-feet-long roadway improvement. So we prefer to engage a contractor to do the work, but I don't expect that the duration of construction will be very excessive. And so we think that once permitting is completed, the turnaround to get a contractor, like I said, either under contract or scheduled to do the work should also not take too long. And with that, I'll turn it back to Tracy if she has any other words. Otherwise, I think we can just open it up to questions.
Tracy, did you have anything else?
No, just if the board has or the commission has any questions.
Okay.
Make the motion.
Thank you. Any commissioners' comments on this item?
No. Vicky, what is the recommended form of the motion, so I can make it?
I would recommend that the motion be that the county commissioners hereby approve and agree to execute the memorandum of understanding between the County of Nantucket, the Town of Nantucket, the Sheep Pond Road residents, and Nantucket Conservation Foundation.
Okay, enough. And did you want language about the betterments as well? And authorize the betterments?
I can include, yes, yes.
Okay.
And authorize the betterments for the Sheep Pond Road project.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, I will make that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Okay.
Moved by Brooke, seconded by Matt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously. Thank you. Commissioners' reports, comments? Seeing none. Entertained a motion to adjourn county commissioners.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dawn, seconded by Brooke. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Chair?
Okay. And we'll be doing that again in select board, so buckle up. Okay, I'm now going to open the May 14, 2025, Select Board meeting to order at 5:48, no, whatever, 5:43 PM, and we will accept the agenda as printed with no changes. And Erica, are you going to do announcements, or am I going to just do them?
I can do them.
Okay, go ahead.
So the Select Board meeting is being audio and video recorded. Next, I'm going to welcome Police Chief Jody Casper to review the National Police Week proclamation and to hand out annual appreciation awards to some of her staff members.
Thank you. Do you have a copy of that proclamation? Thank you. I would need it. I actually thought that the board was reading it, so. Either way. All right, good evening. It is National Police Week. That's May 11 through the 17th, 2025 this year, and I'm just going to read this proclamation. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week that May 15 falls on as National Police Week, and whereas the members of the Nantucket Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of Nantucket, and whereas it is important that all community members know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression, and whereas the members of the Nantucket Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now, therefore, the Select Board of the Town of Nantucket may call upon all community members of the Town of Nantucket to observe the week of May 11 through the 17th, 2025, as Police Week. During this week, community members are encouraged to join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in so doing have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all. I further call upon all community members of the Town of Nantucket to observe Thursday, May 15, 2025, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice and service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty. And let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. Dated this 14th day of May, 2025.
Thanks, Jody. We'll just formally accept the proclamation. Do I have a motion to do so?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now, you want us to come around?
That would be great. Thank you. Thank you. All right, I'm just going to say a few words, and I'm going to introduce the officers. The officers who are receiving awards can remain in the back, and then when you get the award, you can come up. I'll hand it to you. You can go through the Select Board and up the other side. I just wanted to start by saying here on Nantucket, we are so fortunate to have an incredible team of professionals, both sworn and nonsworn, who exemplify the very best in public safety. Their dedication, professionalism, and compassion ensure that our island remains a safe and welcoming place for all. And tonight, we pause not only to express our gratitude to every member of the Nantucket Police Department, but also to recognize a few individuals who have gone above and beyond in their service. Their efforts have made a real impact, and it's my honor to acknowledge their outstanding contributions. And thank you all for joining us as we present these awards this evening. The first award I would like to present is the Life Saving Medal. This medal is awarded for a highly commendable accomplishment or act on duty accomplished as a result of training, devotion to duty, or service to the public. On September 27, 2024, while working as security detail for the Nantucket Project Dinner at Jetties Beach, Lieutenant Jerry Adams noticed a patron choking and unable to breathe. Acting quickly, he rendered medical aid and successfully dislodged a piece of steak that was obstructing her airway. Thanks to his sharp awareness and decisive action, what could have been a tragedy was avoided. His dedication to duty and commitment to protecting others embody the very best of our profession. Tonight, we recognize and honor Lieutenant Adams for his outstanding work and award him the Life Saving Medal. The second award that we're giving out tonight is the Unit Citation Medal. This medal is awarded for participation of the members of an operating unit and/or department group in a noteworthy action that through their individual contributions to a joint endeavor results in a commendable accomplishment and/or public accolades bestowed upon them and the department as a whole. In 2024, members of the Nantucket Police Detective Division launched an extensive investigation into a significant drug dealing operation in our community. For months, they worked tirelessly to gather intelligence, conduct surveillance, and build a solid case. By February 2025, their dedication had paid off. They secured a search warrant for the suspect's home. With the support of additional NPD officers, they executed the warrant, uncovering more than five pounds of a substance believed to be cocaine. The suspect was arrested and charged with trafficking cocaine, marking what is believed to be the largest drug seizure in island history. Cases like these are complex and demand persistent skill and an unwavering commitment to keeping our community safe. Tonight, we recognize and commend the detectives whose diligence brought this investigation to a decisive and impactful conclusion. We recognize Detective Lieutenant Dan Mack and Detectives Amanda Schwank, Keith Mansfield, and James Olson for their outstanding work and award them each the Unit Citation Medal. Thank you all.
Okay, Erica, you want to continue with announcements?
Sure. The 2025 Annual Town Election is scheduled for Tuesday, May 20, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM at the Nantucket High School located at 10 Surfside Road. And our annual committee board commission vacancies is happening right now. I did just want to give a little bit of an update. We have various seats that are available, and we actually, I created a new list today and for your packet next week, and we have a lot of members that are not reapplying for their seats, so there is going to be some openings right now. And I just want to note a couple of them. The Airport Commission has no applicants. There's one seat available. The Cannabis Advisory Committee is looking for an at-large member. Capital Program Committee, Cemetery has somebody. Coastal Resilience Advisory Committee, Contract Review Subcommittee, Council for Human Services, Cultural Council, Finance Committee. Sorry, I'm just going through to see like what's not. The Roads and Right-of-Way Committee, the Scholarship Committee, which is the Town of Nantucket Scholarship, the Tree Advisory Committee, and the Zoning Board of Appeals Alternate. And the deadline is this Friday at noon. Applications can be sent to townadministration@nantucket-ma.gov. They can be sent to me at emooni@nantucket-ma.gov, or they can be dropped off at the Town Administration Office at 16 Broad Street, but we really urge people to apply. I know it's time-consuming, but they are very fulfilling as well. And then, that's it.
Any Select Board announcements or comments? Okay, seeing none. We don't have any update on public comment questions. There were no questions last week, and now is the time for public comment for items not on the agenda. Is anyone present wishing to speak in public comment? Okay, not seeing any hands online, so we will move on from public comment. There's no new business this evening. Next up is approval of minutes, payroll warrants, treasury warrants, and pending contracts. Any questions from the board or a motion?
Move approval.
Okay. Okay, so that's approval of all four.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. Okay. Next up are two resignations. Erica, do you want to run through them for us?
Sure. So we have one resignation from the Finance Committee. That's the current chair, Denise Cronell. She will not be vacating her seat until the end of this fiscal year, which is June 30. So we are looking for somebody to fill her seat as of July 1. And then Michael Kopko has resigned from the Cultural Council. The state is pretty strict about you can only serve for six years, and I think that even though his term with us isn't quite up, his term per the state is because of the amount of years he's served. So I would urge you to, or ask you to, accept those resignations with thanks.
Do I have a motion from the board?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Okay. Start to do roll call. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And thanks to both for their service to the community over the years. So, okay, next up is a citizen request for waiver of Chapter 375 traffic regulations regarding a residential parking permit to allow one additional residential parking permit for corporate vehicle at 6 South Water Street. Amy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So yes, you received a request for a waiver of this. In the residential parking permit regulations, for those in the residential parking district, they are only allowed one commercial vehicle. As you know, you can get up to four residential parking permits per address, but only one can be commercial. In this regulation, in this case, Mr. McKechnie, they had two vehicles, and up until, I believe, 2023, one was registered to Ms. Rantz, and one was registered to their business, and I believe it was 2023 where they changed both to be registered to the business. They had passenger plates, not commercial plates. But again, the regulation does state that anything registered to a commercial business is considered commercial. So it was caught. It was missed for one year. When we have this new system that we use, it just pops it up, and I think it just kind of the first year showed what it had been in 2023. So this year, it was caught as far as a corporate registration. So there's a previous case here that I believe was included in your packet for Mr. Stover several years ago, I believe 2019, who had requested a similar type of waiver. I believe in that case, he had two vehicles that had corporate, or excuse me, commercial plates in that case, and he was allowed that waiver, and he also agreed to give up any additional permit. So I think from our perspective here, the regulation is clear on that case as far as a vehicle registered to a corporate entity. I think if the board wants to look at this and consider, you know, going back, looking at maybe if this is something they'd rather have it just be commercial plates or something that you'd like us to look at as far as an exception, we prefer not to have one-off exceptions because they do lead to others. So if you do consider that, we need to consider if that's something we need to apply moving forward, or again, if you want to give direction to look back at that regulation and make any amendments as you see fit. So that is the history for that. I'll leave it.
Okay, thanks, Amy. Questions from the board?
I think, I'm not sure we need to try to fix this. I think we should do this, and we should do the same stipulations we did with Mr. Stover, which was that we have two cars, not four, because if these were not commercial, there'd be four of them. Let's, you know, if we just do the same thing with him, and the understanding is they have two commercial instead of four residential, and we move on, and we don't worry about it. It's been two in six years.
Right. So if I may question back on that situation, so if we do allow this and this comes up in another situation, are we making that exception if someone comes in with two vehicles that are registered to a business? And I see where this can get missed because our eyes are looking for commercial plates, right? And in that situation, those vehicles are used for a business, and that's why they're limited. We don't want to have a lot of work vehicles and, you know, that sort of thing downtown. But in this case, it's just for whatever reason is registered to a company. It's not used for deliveries, business, things of that sort. So if we allow for the waiver, then what we need to know and our staff needs to understand is, if this comes up again, are we, moving forward, applying this equally to everything that comes at us, instead of just this one exception? You know what I mean?
I know your point.
And I don't think we have a lot of this situation, but that's just my, that would be my wish to have that discussion.
Dawn?
I mean, I think, they actually both live in town.
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, I think that this is a relatively rare I mean, I think that this is a relatively rare situation that's not going to come up a lot, like Matt said, the second one in six years. So I, yes, I think the answer to your question is yes, we would view it the same way for anyone, but there's not going to be a lot of people.
Well, if some, but if someone said, oh, I've got two cars I want to park on street because I'm going to run deliveries all day, you know, we might not, and we want to be able to park them near our business, you know, while the business has a loading zone they don't want to park them in, we'd have different feeling about it. You know, so.
That's a different situation. Erica?
I do want to point out, and it was in your packet, but if it comes up again where it seems different than what this situation is, the regulations state it needs to come to you. So then you'd be able to make your, make a decision then, but.
Exactly.
Yeah. I think I'm comfortable with, because they are passenger plates and they're not commercial plates, and that there is a distinction there. So I think Amy, as you're looking at this, but again, even if that's the case and you see it, you will have to bring it back to us. And then if it starts to be something we see more frequently, then maybe we need to.
Right, correct.
Re-consider.
And I will, I'm sorry. And I just will say, as you brought up, I'm talking about the bigger picture, that Mr. McKechnie, they do live there. We have instances where they don't live where they're asking for a permit for, but in this case, absolutely. And they're not absolutely in this case if I were to grant it would be in this case. So, thank you.
Thanks, Amy. Pleasure, the board?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Thanks, Amy.
Thank you.
Next up is the Finance Department request to increase the Nantucket Memorial Airport Fuel Revolver Spending Limit, and this would be Mr. Turbit, Finance Director.
No. Thank you, Madam Chair. So we're before you, I'm before you on behalf of the Nantucket Memorial Airport. As you know, every year at the Annual Town Meeting, we authorize an amount to be spent out of the revolving fund for fiscal '25. That was $6 million. They're projecting fuel costs that they've already spent and for the next two months to be a total of just over $7.9 million. We're requesting, I realize that I omitted it in the AIS, but we're requesting an increase from six to eight, six million to eight and a half million. As we've come before you, I think we came before you last year, statutorily under Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a half, which the revolving funds are authorized under during a fiscal year with the approval of the Finance Committee and the Select Board, the revolving fund cap can be raised. I will let you know that last night, the Finance Committee did meet and did formally vote to endorse the request to go from $6 million to eight and a half million. So we asked for favorable consideration from the board as well.
Okay. Questions from the board or a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thanks, Brian. Okay, next up is request from the Housing Office for approval of Tacoma Green Land Development Agreement. Kristy is online for us tonight.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to start off by first reminding the community about the Tacoma Green Project and what this entails. So it's right next door to the building you guys are currently located in, construction of 64 units of rental housing that will be serving a variety of income levels, all the way down to 30% of area median income, up to a few market rate units. We do have David Oliveri and Andy Reed in the, in the, in the building tonight to also speak on this as well. We've made a lot of progress since the last time we came in front of this select board. Part of the land development agreement is their due diligence period had expired this past December, and we had extended it. We had hoped that being able to move forward over the last six months, that we would be ready for closing of June 30th, and we had a few unforeseen circumstances arise that were kind of outside of our control. We've had an internal and external work group working on this, which includes Vicky Marsh, Ryan Turbit, Reese Self, and our consultant Bernie Huster. And they, we've met weekly to, you know, completely to make sure that we're close to closing on this deal, and just realized that June 30th is not something that we could target with the delays by, by other organizations. So I'm going to hand it over to Andy and David to give an update on the project. Thank you.
Just a reminder to go to the mic and state your full name for the record, please.
My name is Andy Burns, and I'm one of the partners in the Tacoma Green Project. I am the President of Holkeen Management, and I have tonight David Oliveri of Norton Point Development, who is a partner with us in this venture. As Kristy has said, I think we've made huge project, progress with this property and this project in very, very uncertain times. I think we all realize that the last six months have been really turbulent in construction markets, in the financing markets, and frankly, we are ready to go. And we thought we were going to be on target with the last time we sat here. And unfortunately, we ran, have run into a problem with the northern long-eared bat, and it is preventing us from providing all the lenders and financing agencies with a clean environmental report. And we literally have gone through, as is outlined in the report, the letter that we sent in, I think, last week, the week before last, we have gone through extensive work on the financing side with the HLC, EOHLC, I never can remember their new name, with Mass Housing, now with MHP, with our, our private equity tax credit lenders Stratford and Rockland Bank, to put all the financing pieces of this project together. In addition, David and the rest of the development team have been really working hard with Delbrook Construction in a period, I think we all realize, inflation is just going like that on the construction side. We're set on the construction side. But for this northern long-eared bat, we would be here tonight not asking for a extension. We don't have a solution tonight for the long-eared bat, but we are working hard. We've got our legal team working with Fish and Wildlife, with HUD, with Mass Housing, trying to come up with a, a plan and a solution that will enable us to move forward rapidly with the project. But I don't want to make a representation that that can happen, and that's what the extension is for here tonight. Worst case is that we're not allowed to clear that site until the 1st of December. I think, is that correct, David? 1st of December. And we literally will be working diligently on the closing up until that point if we have to wait. But we are still, as I said, we're working on trying to come up with a solution that will enable us to move faster, and yet tonight, we're requesting the extension.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the board?
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
I would just comment quickly. In my own experience, our project at the Nantucket Rackets Sports Association, excuse me, was delayed for exactly the same reason, and that pushed us back, that we had to wait for, I think it was the mating season to go, and, but before they could clear that site. So I have some sympathy for you in that, in, in my experience with this, our own project.
Any other questions?
What will this do to the budget?
Excuse me?
The costs, I assume, will go up?
We believe that we've got the resources lined up to deal with the construction issues. And in fact, what we've crossed my fingers, my arms, and everything, that we're seeing a little bit of stabilization in construction pricing, and I, I, we are looking to go forward on the construction budget and the financing plan that we have in place today. I would say that, you know, our, one of our last pieces, we had last night or yesterday, Mass Housing voted officially to move forward with their financing of the project, which has been, we've been working with them for, you know, a long time, and we got an official vote from them yesterday to move forward with the project. So major.
I have a question for town staff, and you may be able to help. What impact does the condominium structure have, if any, on town finances or exposure or anything? This is, and I was, my head was spinning when I looked at your charts. It is, it is complex.
It is complex, yet more and more affordable housing projects have been using this condominium structure, and we think it has absolutely no negative effect to the town at all. It provides some flexibility to the, the finance partners. I think Brian's here, maybe he could speak to that?
Yeah. Does it have no impact or now or in the future?
We don't believe it has any detrimental impact the way that it's structured. Matt, I think actually it's more of a positive, the way that it's structured, because if you remember when we, I think maybe the last time we were here asking for the extension, there was discussion about the viability of payback, and I want to credit David and Andy and all of their team because they took all of that. And with this structure, it is actually, we're participating on both sides, and it actually creates a, a setup that Hilltop has reviewed and believes that we're more likely to be payback and on a more accelerated basis. So I don't think it has a negative impact to the town, to be honest with you.
Good, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion to approve the extension.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's a no from Matt.
I'm a no, just anytime I've ever had something that's taken this long and been this convoluted, I wished later that I didn't do it. So I have to go with my experience. I'm sorry.
That's fine, 4-1. Okay. Thank you guys very much for making the trip down.
Thank you for your patience, and Mr. Thea, I understand your frustration. I mean, I, I think this whole dynamic of affordable housing, not only on Nantucket, it is really not, it's a, not a good thing.
No, I understand. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I could just, with the closing comments, say thank you, and to remind the board and the community that these 64 units will be going on to our subsidized housing inventory list, and will provide two years of safe harbor. So we're really excited to see this project move forward. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for that reminder, Kristy, as well. Okay. Next up, Real Estate Matters, request for approval and extension of the Memorandum of Understanding for Sheep Pond Road. Alternative access, yes, it's Groundhog Day. Tracy?
Thank you. Tracy McDonald, Real Estate Specialist. I had intended to do an abbreviated version, but should I just repeat the whole?
I move approval.
Yeah, I don't think you need to repeat anything. Just, just, I think what we need to acknowledge is that this has to be approved by both the county commissioners and the select board. And so is there, to Attorney Marsh, is there anything different in the motion for the select board than the county commissioners? Any?
No, there is not.
So repeating the motion from the county commissioners?
I move approval.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thanks, Tracy.
Thank you.
And then next up is a request for approval and execution of a purchase and sale agreement for 77 Bartlett Road.
Thank you. So the acquisition of 77 Bartlett Road is related to the Somerset area needs capital project for sewer, stormwater drainage, roadway improvements on Bartlett Road, Raceway Drive, and Somerset Road. An additional planned phase of the project will be a bike path connector to Hummock Pond Road. For this initial phase of the project, a pumping station is required in the area to service the new improvements. 77 Bartlett Road was identified as a low-lying and suitable location for the station, and I was able to work with the homeowner on a mutually beneficial agreement for purchase of the property, which also includes two single-family homes that can be utilized when the project is completed. Town Council prepared the agreement and reviewed with the Owners Council, and I am requesting that the Select Board approve and execute this purchase and sale agreement to secure this asset and location for a new pumping station, and if there are questions about the agreement or project, I will be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thanks, Tracy. Any questions from the board? Motion? Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy, for all the work on that. Really appreciate it. Okay, next up is, under Town Manager's Report, is the presentation of the Fiscal Year 2024 Audit Report by the Town Auditor.
Thank you for having me today. We just, about an hour ago, a couple hours ago, had a full presentation with the Audit Committee. So we went into this in significant detail. A lot of questions were asked, a lot of clarifications were made. So two of the members are, are here tonight. So this will be more of a top-level approach rather than have something drag on all night. But please feel free to ask any questions as we, as we move along, and, and we'll go from there. So let's flip to the first slide, please. And my name is Tony Roselli, and I'm a partner with the firm of Roselli, Clark &amp; Associates, who does the annual audit in the town of Nantucket. All right, the first slide that I thought was good to illustrate was where does the town stand financially? And what better way to look at that than, but to look at the reserves? So you'll see, and I did a historical trend analysis here dating way back to the, the 2009 financial crisis, and I thought that was a good, like, marker to start the process. And you can see that the reserves, and let me backtrack for a second, reserves are equal to the town's stabilization fund balances plus the undesignated fund balance in the general fund, which is basically the free cash. When you add those two numbers up, you have the reserve balances. So you can see in 2009, the numbers were nowhere near as healthy as they are in the present years, probably a little bit over $5 million. If you see, there's been a nice progressive trend of reserve fund balances increasing. And the good thing about this is that the bond raters, your bond rating agencies who look at your bonds and help you sell these, like to see reserve balances. The higher your reserve balances, the better your bond rating. And the town of Nantucket does have a AAA bond rating with Moody's, so, so this trend has been, has been rewarded. You can see that in '23, it peaked at about $45 million, and that dip there to $35, which basically normalizes the reserves with '21 and '22, was basically planned. It was relayed, it was spending that the town made from free cash. So it wasn't due to a bad economic event or an operational issue. It was a, it was planned spending. The reserves had gotten high, and the, the, the financial offices determined that it was prudent that rather than go into debt for some of these different expenses that you have, that you could use some, some of your reserves. And that's why that had dropped to $35 million from $45 million. $35 million is still a very, very healthy reserve. It's still above where the bond rating folks like, like to see it, and by doing that, you did avoid a little bit of debt and some interest costs. So any questions on this really great trend here, encouraging trend? Okay, let's go to the next slide. The next slide kind of shows where does a town stand when compared to other metrics. So the state average, you can see the town's well above the state average, which is somewhere between 10 and 12%. The town is up probably about 35% right now. And the, the high-end metric that the rating agencies like to see is about, Moody's likes to see 30%, S&amp;P likes to see 15%. So you're, you're above both of those. So we'll go to the next slide. This kind of summarizes those things. I'd like to highlight that last bullet that we haven't talked about. So, you know, when a reserve's too high, when are they too low? What you've done here is you've actually increased your reserves, but you've maintained a decent levy capacity. So you're walking a fine line where you are giving taxpayers a break by not taxing to the capacity, but also building reserves. So that's a really good balance to be in. And this just, like I, this just summarizes, let's see if there's anything. The town is one of 15 communities. The town is one of 15 communities that has a AAA with the Moody's in the state. It's very difficult to get a AAA with Moody's. So you're in there with the Brooklines, the Newtons, the Cambridges. Something to be very proud of. And the other things we've talked about, this is kinda just summary information. So unless there are any other questions on this, we can, we can move. Okay, so let's talk about some informational items. And one of the topics I love to talk about is the OPEB, which stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits. And those are benefits that you give to your employees once they retire. In Nantucket, it's 99 or possibly 100% health insurance. In other communities, they have life insurance and dental. But in Nantucket, it's mostly health insurance. So what exactly is this liability? As people work for the town, they vest. And when they get to a certain point, they've earned the, the ability for the town to pay their, pay their health insurance or contribute towards their health insurance. The accounting standard says you have to identify that liability now because you have a liability and you have to quantify it. So the town engages an actuary that goes through all the necessary demographic data, life expectancies, contribution rates on, on the health insurance, rate of return on the planned assets, and comes up with a liability. And your liability was $115 million at the end of '24. The town's planned assets that it's accumulated against that liability is about 6%. And some folks will say, hey, that's kinda low. And it, it is low, but it's in the mean for what the rest of the state is doing. The state of Massachusetts got a late start on OPEB. They're ahead of the curve on pension, but they have a late start on OPEB. So there's no regulation right now that you have to contribute to this liability, unlike pension where you do have to contribute to pension. And the pension funding is up around 70 to 75% with Barnstable County. So, so the town is contributing. The goal is that once you're fully funded on Barnstable County, that you could start to divert some of the funds that you were using for pension, you could divert towards OPEB and start to catch up on OPEB years down the road. Any questions on, on OPEB?
Just a comment, this is one of those things that started, you know, 15, 20 years ago on the FinCom, just putting a little bit of money toward it. And it seems like it's not much, it's, you know, $250,000, $500,000. But over time, it starts to chip away. And so I, I think that we've done, you know, especially Brian and his staff have done a good job at sort of moving this along and heading us the right direction.
Yeah, compounding is a great thing, you can't understate it. So the fact that you were contributing years ago, those monies compound. And even though it's, wasn't a lot of money years ago, it's, it's, you're up to 6% now, which is, is quite a good amount in the, in the fund. And those will continue to earn, earn monies. And the one thing that I wanted to talk about while we're on OPEB is on the pension side, which, which is up to, I think you're 70 to 75% funded at this point. So it's well-funded, Barnstable's done a pretty good job with the pension. The bond rating folks are gonna begin to start adding that to the, to the debt. So they're considering that almost like it's debt. So you're gonna be adding this liability when they go through your ratio, which in the past, they had not done that. So that's something to just keep an eye on moving forward. The next item, which I put in all my reports, is network security. We can't talk enough about it. You know, when I turn on the TV and Fox News is on and one of my towns has gotten hacked and they're under ransomware, it's, it's just not a good feeling. So just, I may sound like a broken record because I talk about this every year, but we can't talk about it enough. We have to remain vigilant, we have to train our people, we have to put out the, the fake, you know, phishing emails to catch people and see where our vulnerable people who need the most training are and put a picture of them in downtown centers. These are, these are our vulnerable ones.
Caught me once.
It's, it, they're very clever. They are very clever and, you know, it's, it's scary out there, but you have to remain one step ahead of them. The next item is some, some really, really good news. We've talked about the town using its cash as a revenue-producing asset. And in 2024, it returned $6.4 million. And that's a benefit of, the rate's increasing. It's, it's had a negative effect on your bonds, but positive effect on your interest income where you've earned $6.4 million. That doubled what you had earned in 2023. Treasurer's office does a great job. I can't speak enough about the wonderful job she does, keeping the banks honest, talking to them. Every time she sees rate movements, she's on the phone, making phone calls. Can, can we move to this, to this account? Can we do something with this? So she's, she's very good about that. And if they give her a hard, if they give her a hard time, she doesn't hesitate to say, we'll use another bank. So, so she does a very good job on that. So we can go to the next slide unless there's any questions? Okay, so here's a handful of findings and recommendations. So everything we've talked about so far, it's just been kind of observations, nothing that I would call a finding. So the first thing that I wanted to highlight is the water inventory. So that number, probably right around when you started running into the supply problems, COVID pandemic, they started purchasing more. So that inventory was not being used as quickly, but it was increasing. At the end of '24, it was over $1 million. And we had looked at this about four or five years ago, when Heidi was down there. And we had talked about what should be put in place, how to account for this. And unfortunately, Heidi left and some things have been done, but not a lot. So I actually went down there last July 1st and counted it with, with the crew down there at the water department. Cause wanted to see what was there, how you handling it, what are you doing with it? And, and the thing that we really need to, that I thought was really important is, so when you have inventory, when you purchase something, you add it to what's called a perpetual record. So you add that purchase. When you use it, you deduct that. Theoretically, if everything's been done perfectly, that record should equal exactly what you have in inventory. And that, that wasn't the case. You know, it, it was off and I don't think anything inappropriate happened. It was more forgetting to write something that had been purchased or something that had been released out of inventory, wasn't being recorded. So what I had recommended to the, to the folks down there is to actually, you know, start doing it quarterly. You do it quarterly, don't wait till the end of the year. Identify what sort of issues you're running into and really get a grasp of this because it's a really, really large asset now. And we also found that the stock was not being counted even though there was $600,000 or $700,000 on the books. So that's a control that we said you should put in place. You should count the stock and compare it. So the goal is that when I go back there on July 1st, that we're gonna have everything counted, everything costed, compare it to the perpetual inventory and make some recommendations on adjustments and then use that moving forward. So kinda clean it up, use it moving forward, start doing the quarterlies, have the finance department do test counts to see, you know, if it's being done appropriately. So, so I think that's important to do. One of the things that I understand is going on down there is there's a building being constructed. And I think that's gonna help out a lot with just organizing the inventory into one location. Cause right now, it's in a bunch of different places, so it's, it's hard to, to control. Any questions on that particular topic?
Yeah, what's, what's the system to receive? Do they receive everything through, it receives, they accept it and they check against the invoice that's coming in from wherever it's coming from? When it goes out, is there an invoice that's written for each project or et cetera?
They have like a requisition type of, so they go in, they have a program, they go in and release it.
Yep.
And that, that doesn't agree. So when you count eight pipes, it might say there's only, there's 10. It should be 10, but you only see eight. So that, that's where the discrepancy is.
Yep, so someone's grabbing stuff without getting it written down, most likely.
Right, right. Okay, next item is Chapter 90 reimbursement process. Chapter 90, for those who are unaware, is the chapter at the state that was created to reimburse you for, for your eligible roadwork. The town gets about $600,000 to $700,000 a year. We found that, and we, and we looked, this started in the last two years. This has been a constant comment. We found that the town had not been reimbursing for that. The Public Works Department had not been reimbursing for those costs. Even though they were incurring them, they had not been asking the state to send the money. And that got up to about $1.2, $1.3 million. In talking to the finance director, it will be resolved. It's in the process of being done right now. All of the prior years, all are 25. So when we come in to do our audit, this should all be collected. And there is a better process in place for managing this.
And I'd just like to add that, that happened at a time when we had some turnover at the director level in the department. And so there, so that's where the accumulated lack of filing for the reimbursements kinda built up over time. So the current DPW director is cleaning it up.
Sure. So, and some of these projects are pretty big, so it's, it's important. And happy to see that it's being worked on. Next is a comment we've had for a couple of years. I understand this too will be corrected. But this is mostly your motor vehicle excise and your personal property taxes. And motor vehicle, you could always send it off to the registry. Someone goes and renews their license or renews their plates or whatever. They can't get it done because they have outstanding, they have outstanding citations at the registry of motor vehicles. So they'd have to pay them off first and the town would get paid. What's happened is the state has purged anything greater than 10 years old on motor vehicle. So you have some motor vehicle going back to the early 2000s, some into the 1990s. Not a lot of money, but you're never gonna collect it. Cause you really don't, unless you, you know, file, file small claims or something to that effect, you just won't collect it. Not worthwhile, not a lot of money. So my, and same thing with personal property. Personal property goes back in certain situations to 1989. Unlike real estate taxes, you can't lien personal property. So real estate taxes, you'll never lose because you put a lien on the property. Eventually, you get it, it attaches to the estate. The town eventually gets its money. Personal property, you can't do that. There's no mechanism, like I said, other than hiring a lawyer or going to small claims court. The total of all this is less than $200,000. It stretches back 36 years. So it's not a lot per year, but it would really clean up the records nicely because right now, there's a row for every single year. And from what I understand, the town has, the finance department is working with the assessors to put the proper abatements in place to just, to write it off and have these be done with. So hopefully everyone's in agreement with that. That's, that was my recommendation because I've seen towns try to collect things from 100 years ago and it doesn't go well. Next is stagnant balances. And what a stagnant balance is, when one of your department heads applies for a grant, gets the grant, say it's a $20,000 grant, and they expense against that grant. A lot of times, that expense gets posted to the general fund by accident because it's a very similar type of expense. And two years later, that $20,000 is still there in the special revenue fund because it's already been expensed. And if you take this times 30 or 40 departments in three or four years, it begins to add up to a very large number. So about seven years ago, I had made this recommendation and the finance department, along with the department heads, were able to go through all of this, all of the monies and return a million five to the, to the general fund. This was six or seven years ago. So this started up again and the number that we're looking at now is probably, the number is 3 million. I don't know how much is gonna be returned, but it's a pretty sizable number that will be returned to the general fund for just miscodings and, and things to that effect. So, so, and it's impossible to micromanage these every single year. There's just hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of these. So it's very good to like every, say, five years to just look at what's there and say, hey, why, call the department and say, say, why hasn't this been spent? And it could be a new department head that says, hey, I didn't even know we had that money. So I will spend it now. So, so that's, that's the stagnant balance comment. The DESI chart, unless anyone has any questions on that. The DESI chart of accounts is mostly related to the school. And it's a requirement by the State Department of Education that they want the chart of accounts at the school department set up in a certain way. Otherwise, you have to do bridges, workarounds to try to audit it. The schools looked, looked into it. It's a fairly expensive process. You'd have to change the entire chart of accounts. And it's, it just, at that point, you might as well put a new system in. So the school has said, hey, what would happen if we don't do this? And I have not seen the state really push this. It's just on their compliance checklist. The only reason it's on here is I have to check it, no. I haven't seen them make a big deal about this. I know they know this is a big, big, you know, event for a town. So they're not really gonna try to put a town, you know, out of business, you know, over this comment. So I don't view that as a big, a big deal. But we've gotta put it down as a compliance issue. Any questions on this particular page?
On that, on the last one, will there be a, will the school at some point have a new system? Will they change over to something in the next five or 10 years?
I, I think that, I think when it will get addressed is when the town goes through a whole, Brian speak to that.
That's a great question. So the school is integrated and immunist with us. So in order to actually address this and fix it, we would have to rewrite the entire town's chart of accounts. And as Tony referenced, if we're gonna get to the point of undertaking a massive rewrite of the entire accounting system, it probably would be the time we would look to see if there's a new ERP system available that will perform all of the functions better. So this is probably at least two or three years off before we even consider that.
Yeah, so this, the time would be when you're doing a major change and then you wanna make sure it's top of the.
Yeah, that time would be if we made a change to our ERP system would be when we would do this because it'd be fresh right from the beginning to do it. So that's likely when this will happen at this point.
Makes sense.
That's it for the findings and recommendations. I wanted to just, and this isn't really findings and recommendations. It's mostly when you're going through your strategy sessions. And this isn't news to anyone. The bond market's been extremely volatile. The stock market's been volatile. That could impact your pension and your OPEB. Supply chain issues depending on what the final result of the tariffs are. Federal grants are in question. Thankfully, you don't rely on federal grants in your general fund, so it won't affect your operations, but it could affect some side programs if something were to happen to your grants. But these are all things that have been introduced by the new administration in Washington that you've gotta just pay attention to. I know that it's very disturbing that if you're out doing a borrowing and one day it's 4% and the next day it's 4.4%. That's just, it's just like very hard to manage your debt. And I know that your financial advisors over at Hilltop are just, just pulling their hair out of their head, you know, that one day it's one thing, the next day it's something else. So just pay attention to this stuff when you're going through your budgets, when you're, you know, potential recessionary fears. Although things seem to be, since I wrote this, things, things seem to be calming down a little bit, but, but we'll, we'll see. So any, I, any questions or concerns? That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Have a great night.
And a thorough report. Thanks so much. Okay. Next up is committee reports. Anything from the board?
The, oh, coastal resiliency met yesterday. There was an inter, we had someone from Boston explaining sort of how they're doing their resiliency, et cetera. There was an interesting comment about tree wells and how they, in Boston and some of the areas in Southie, et cetera, they're using tree wells to capture water, which is, we've talked about tree wells here because we would be able to get maybe some of the tree roots deeper in the, you know, deeper in not ruining the sidewalks. And it was just interesting that they were using them to capture water somehow too. So I don't know, you know, so I know Vince wrote it down and it was just an interesting comment that I didn't want to lose. And the other thing in the New York Times today, there was an interesting article about, on Montauk, they're having a restaurant there that's trying to become private. And they're having the same discussions that we're having here where, you know, a private club restaurant where people pay 4,000 to join and promise to spend 2,000 a year and get priority for seating, et cetera. And Montauk is fighting back, saying that's not what we've been. We've always been, you know, everybody together and everybody waiting in line, et cetera. And so it's just interesting, the pressures that we're feeling a bit here are happening in other places too. It's interesting to follow others and see that we're kind of not alone. So, thank you.
Seeing none. We will now go on to a public hearing. This is an historic district commission appeal. And as I always do on these, I ask town council George Pucci, could you put up the appeal, the hearing process? And I'm going to ask council Pucci to just review how this will go tonight. So everybody's expectations are in line. George, are you there? I'm guessing he stepped away for a minute.
Do you want me to review it in the meantime? Let's go ahead and text him.
Okay.
We're going to text him. Hold tight. Do you want me to review it?
I can just review it.
You sure?
Yeah.
Okay.
So first I'll open the public hearing and we will follow the procedures outlined above. The appellant will be given an opportunity to state their case and their reason for the appeal. And then the HDC will review its position. And then we have rebuttals and we'll do some limited back and forth and a reminder to speak through the chair and not directly to each other at the microphones. And we'll take questions from the board as well as public comment because it is a public hearing. So then we'll close the public hearing and deliberate the matter as a board. So I will now open the public hearing to consider the appeal of G and G Burge LLC of Historic District Commission Approval Certificate of Appropriateness Number HDC 2024-12-11707 for an addition to an existing dwelling located at 23 Ocean Ave, map 73 dot 3 dot 1 parcel 19. Ms. Alger, are you going to represent the appellant?
Yes, with Ms. Williams who did the historical research.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead. Okay.
So I represent G and G Burge LLC. Greg Dunbar and Glenn Hinderstein are the managers. And I think they may be in watching. You might need to bring one of them over or, or both.
Is it Gregory D?
That sounds right. Okay. Well, okay. So I'm not going to go through my entire letter because I, I really think it, it speaks for itself, but I did want to set forth a couple of important points. First of all, on a butter notification, obviously we knew about the hearing. We showed up at it. It, it's just unfortunate that the paper file and the digital file are different. They should be the same. The same material should be available in the paper file as in the digital file. And I think it, it raises a question of credibility about this particular application that this kind of trumped up a butters list, not official, with a list that didn't even include the two direct butters. My clients and the people immediately to the north of 23 Ocean Avenue at Rutter Grange weren't even on the list that was initially filed. And I just wonder why was that list filed? Was that to like game the system because they didn't have the official list? So they wanted to get it in? I don't really understand what happened there, but it, it's kind of disconcerting. And then the list that they did provide, which is certified by the assessor, Mr. Ranny, is dated December 17th, but the notices that they sent out are dated December 16th. I just don't, I kind of don't understand what happened there. Anyway, the second thing I wanted to bring to your attention is that your appeal process specifically states no new information may be brought forth during the appeal process before the select board. And this is, this is supposed to be a hearing on the record, an appeal on the record, not a new hearing. And yet the letter that was submitted by the owner's representative actually includes some pretty significant new information. Exhibit three to that letter, which is on page 244 of your packet, was never part of the HDC proceedings. It's not part of the HDC file that was submitted and it shouldn't be considered. And I think it puts my client at a bit of a disadvantage because we were playing by the rules. We didn't attempt to, we could have submitted additional or new information. We didn't. But the owner did. And I just wanted to bring that to your attention. The owner's letter also states that the project was designed by one of the most preservation minded architects on Nantucket, Angus MacLeod, who himself is a member of the HDC. Well, first of all, I don't think that's accurate. My understanding is that Mr. MacLeod is not an architect. And I think people shouldn't represent themselves as architects if they're not. That's probably an innocent mistake, but I think it's important because I think bodies tend to give more credence to people with professional credentials than they, than they might to someone who does not. I think the distinction is important and it certainly would be important to me if I was a registered architect. The other piece that that brings up is the fact that yes, Mr. MacLeod is in fact a member of the HDC. And isn't that a little bit of a problem? Because when he comes around the table, he's sitting as a member of the HDC, then he comes around the table at the same meeting and presents his project. It gives, it may be proper, it may be 100% proper, but it gives the wrong impression. It leads you to feel that maybe he is getting some sort of improper deference from his fellow commissioners. Another problem with the letter is that it says that a demolition plan was filed. And I don't think that any demolition plan was filed despite the request of the staff, despite the fact that in the July 2022 hearing, that was kind of an important piece. Holly Backus, who's the preservation planner who works for the HDC, in her May 1st letter, in defense of the COA, by the way, confirms that the staff recommended demolition plans, but one, but the fact that one wasn't provided. They recommend them for all alterations to historic structures. They are really important because without a demolition plan and without knowing how the construction is going to go forward, you have no way of knowing what damage may or may not occur to a, to a historic structure. This structure was built in the 1870s. Do we know that it can support on its own, an entire second floor addition without, without having to take it down to the foundation? No, we don't. And the reason that we don't know that is that no demolition plan was ever, was ever filed. The letter attempts to downplay the significance of the proposed addition by stating that the project consists, quote, "only of a small bunk room for the owner's grandchildren in a pergola," end quote. Well, I mean, first of all, my understanding is that the owners are rarely, if ever, in residence at this home. It's used predominantly as a rental. And that, that isn't really relevant here. But second, no addition of this scope to an 1870s home is simple. It's going to impact the entire structure and be, and should be carefully evaluated. I think that demolition plan is something staff requested and it's something that the HDC should have required. This structure is a contributing structure, a significant structure, and its setting is historic. The letter that they submitted says, quote, "In short, no facts were presented to the HDC by the appellant that shows that the house at 23 Ocean Avenue has any particular historical significance," end quote. I mean, that's just categorically untrue. The owner's own filings, they went to quite an extent to have this historic filing made by Marcia Fader with Betsy Tyler's research, actually supports our position that this is a historic structure. I mean, it's built in the 1870s. If that isn't historic, I'm not sure what is. But there's also an HDC survey that supports our position. That's in the file. Found it to be a contributing structure. The research that the Nantucket Preservation Trust did, that supports our, our position as well. We made an extensive report documenting the history and significance of the structure. Ms. Williams will probably talk about that a little bit more, but the letter from Ms. Backus, May 1st, 2025, in defense of the COA, agrees that this historic dwelling is a contributing structure and a significant structure and that its setting is historic. When Ms. Backus speaks, if she does, I would ask that she give her opinion as to the importance of this structure and its setting. A significant structure in building with Nantucket in mind is any building on the island 50 years old or older, which we certainly qualify for, which is either associated with one or more historic figures or events, or with Broad Island architectural, cultural, political, economic, or social history, or is historically or architecturally significant either by itself or in context with other buildings in terms of period, style, method of construction, or association with a noted architect or builder. This property fits that description multiple times over. Whether ye double decker, which is what it was called, is technically an Underhill cottage, I think is a bit of a red herring. This building was owned by Edward Underhill. He is the person who built the Underhill cottages and conceived of them. It was used by him as his personal residence. It's where he lived while he was building what I think we would all agree are the other Underhill cottages. And it's not a stretch to think that he, that he considered this to be the cornerstone of his development and he took inspiration for it. I mean, arguably it's more important than all the other cottages because it was there before and it's what he built from. It's a contributing structure, a significant structure as defined in building with Nantucket in mind. Its setting is clearly historic. So what I come down to is the HDC approval was arbitrary and capricious. No demolition plan despite age and construction and in face, in face of staff recommendation, which is what they recommend for all historic structures. At least one commissioner spoke of private views in making a decision. My clients are the direct butters and never once have they mentioned private views. And speaking of public views, while not something that my clients did, I think is certainly something that's completely inappropriate, completely appropriate, something that you should consider when you consider what will, how will the view down Pocheck Street for the general public as they head down Pocheck Street, which is one way from McKinley down to Ocean Avenue? How will that view be affected by this, by this overwhelming and large, what I consider overwhelming and large and inappropriate addition?
Sarah, you getting close?
I'm very close.
Okay.
The HDC completely reversed course that it set very clearly at its July 22 meeting without any rationale. It failed to follow its own guidelines, standards, and legislative mandate to preserve and protect historic places, districts, to develop an appropriate setting, and promote historic associations. So I would urge you to vacate this. And, you know, if you don't want to vacate it, at a minimum, send it back to the HDC for further discussion about the importance of the structure, the impact of the proposed changes, and the requirement for, at a minimum, a demolition plan so that we know that when this work is done, the remainder of this significant 1879 house will remain. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. I'm going to, Linda, just hang tight. I'm going to have Holly respond on behalf of the HDC. There was a lot there, so I want her to get an opportunity to respond directly after your comments, Sarah. Thank you.
And I think my client had something he might want to say.
Okay. But first,
Sure.
the process is your presentation and then the HDC response. So are we doing Holly or Val or some combination of the two?
Holly's going to speak first.
Okay. Go ahead, Holly.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate being here this evening. During the HDC's review on March 18th, there were some, basically some facts that really need to get straight. First of all, there was an application that was originally submitted in June of 2022 for a 382 square foot addition. And this application
Holly, we're having, we're having a little bit of a hard time hearing you. Can you either get closer to your mic or speak up, please?
Yes. Sorry.
Thank you.
She's way out in the boondocks.
Hope this helps, Madam Chair.
That's better.
Okay. Thank you. Um, where was I? Sorry.
Sorry.
That's okay. So although this, this application was heard in May 18th, or excuse me, March 18th, 2025, really this project started in June of 2022. It was originally submitted for a 382 square foot addition. And this application was heard by the commission again in July of 2022 with a request to hold for revisions on that height, mass, and additional information relative to those revisions and maybe an option for a basement. Revisions were submitted by a different agent in June 2023, but it was withdrawn in July of 2023 and never heard by the commission. This information is relevant to the application that is before you this evening on the appeal. It was submitted in December of 2024 and then heard in March 18th, 2025. During that hearing, there was a discussion about the historic nature of this structure from, from both the architectural historians and a butters. Butters comments were received from both applications and were included in your file. I think it's important that, one, the, sometimes the applications that we receive, both digitally and in person, sometimes there is a miss, not everything gets scanned. That's up to the applicant to submit everything digitally. And it could have been taken care of during the meeting when it was mentioned. But we do in fact have the butters information. This is a historic structure. It is a contributing structure. I understand, Ms. Alger, one might, me to under, to give my opinion, yes, not only is this structure associated with Mr. Underhill himself, the structure he purchased from the heirs of Matthew Crosby back in 1879. So it was built by the Crosby family in the 1850s per Marcia Fader's history that was created, which was in the file. And I wholly believe her, her research. This structure, I think today, if we were updating our historic surveys for this area while all the structures within the, the Underhill area have old 89 HDC surveys, this is the catalyst and essentially the start of his neighborhood. This, these structures are also based on the architecture that was created over off of Broadway and Shell Streets as the old T-shaped whale houses. So this was the catalyst, the start. It was there prior to, and I think that's important to, to indicate. This is also, I think at the end of the day, this was not a full This is also, I think, at the end of the day, this was not a full supported application. As I mentioned in my letter, this was a three to two vote, so it was not a unanimous vote, very, very important to note. And I also do think it's important to note that the commissioners that were in favor of it, or excuse me, in opposition of it, were the same commissioners that were in opposition to it when it was originally reviewed. And I do notate that typically we don't bring in information from a previous application, but from the start, I think it's important that it was already brought into the conversation from when this came back before the commission in March with a new application along with the appeal that's before you. So again, this was not a unanimous vote. Not everything that staff had requested was was provided. That's, that doesn't always happen, but again, this is a historic structure, and it would benefit of having all the information before the commission. So I, you know, I sit here and say that the, that, as I think Mr. Pucci always says, that finding the commission to be arbitrary and capricious is a high standard. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Holly. Val, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, can I?
Sure. Go ahead.
Thank you, Val Oliver.
Could you bring that mic right up? You need it right in front of, yep, there you go.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, it's better. Thanks.
So having read the 264 pages of this massive file, there is-
Hang on, I'm gonna interrupt. Just Val Oliver is a member of the HDC for the record.
Okay. Sorry. Thank you. There is some misinformation, I think, circulating, which I would, from my perspective. I keep hearing this is the third time that this has been heard. It was heard in 2022 at the size of 382 square feet. Fast forward, an interim architect did a rendition, which was submitted and got withdrawn at 266, and here we've landed in 2025 with 140 square feet. We have gone from three, they went from 382 to 140. So to say that this is the same application coming back and back and back, and we're voting on the same thing in a different way, is completely not true. It is less than half the original size. Despite some opinion, people do have the right to add to their houses, whether they're historic or not, contributing or not. It doesn't mean there is absolutely nothing you can do to your house. If it is deemed by the board that it's appropriate, so be it. We deemed it appropriate, the majority. It's very simple to lower it, and this was part of a discussion, would mean to put dormers in it, and that would be highly inappropriate because it is such a simple structure. Additionally, for me, we had a report from Marcia Fader, which was very extensive, in favor of this addition to this building. Rob Benchley's report from the Scotset Advisory Commission, which was in favor of this addition, and Holly, while maybe not 100% in favor, did admit it has come a long way, and it was simplified and smaller. It was more subordinate. It could be more subordinate, but it had come, to some extent, to be more subordinate. Unfortunately, the HDC meetings have become a venue for arbitrating anything that neighbors have concerns with on projects. As for the comment that keeps being brought up about, my comment about protecting people's views, I probably should have qualified that before I said it. I had just read all the butter letters, and one in particular resonated with me, and their basis for opposing this was property values, their views, parking, everything except what had to do with the architecture of the structure. And that is why I made that comment. I should have qualified it ahead of time. So in closing, I think it's very simple. It's 10 by 13. We approved this because we felt the majority of us felt it was appropriate. It is not an Underhill cottage. Yes, Mr. Underhill owned this building. It is significantly different from any other Underhill structure. It's two stories. Funny, he lived in a two-story structure, and he made all his cottages, like, below grade. And so I do not think we acted arbitrary and capricious in any manner on this, and the approval should be upheld. Yes, perhaps we should ask for a demolition plan. I would concur with that. I think that got lost along the way, but those are the facts from our point of view.
Okay. Thank you, Val. Okay, I am going to, I have two folks online identified as owners' representatives. Would one of you like to make a brief statement?
We've got Linda here, too.
Hi.
No, I know.
Yes, I would like to make a statement. I'm Kurt Kuziak. I'm a counsel for the owner, Marcia Brown, who owns it through Beam Reach LLC. And I'd just like to briefly focus the select board on a couple of points with respect to the HDC's approval of the certificate of appropriateness. First, to answer some of the points that were made by the appellant. With respect to the reference to Angus MacLeod as an architect, she's right. I did use the word architect in my letter to the select board, and that is incorrect. The actual term should be architectural designer. So that's 100% my fault. That is not a representation that Mr. MacLeod makes. He has designed many, many homes, but I gave the wrong addressing title for that. With respect to a demolition plan, there was, in fact, a demolition plan that's in the packet. I don't know if you can see this here, that's part of the HDC packet, but as you can see, it says demolition plan, and it was presented for the regulations. It's a simple, uncomplicated demolition plan, simply because there's not much demolition at all to be done on this structure. They're just removing a portion of the roof and turning, removing part of a wall where a window is essentially becoming a door. This is much, much smaller than the plan that was submitted in 2022. It consists only of a bunk room that the owner is building to have a bedroom for her grandchildren. The original plan that was submitted way back in '22 consisted of a bunk room, a bedroom, a hallway, a bathroom, and a porch as well. So it was much, much larger than than what has been presented here. With respect to notification, the objection that they made is that the incorrect of butters' list was submitted electronically. That is correct. Initially, the incorrect of butters' list was submitted electronically only because when Angus MacLeod tried to get the butters, the certified of butters' list, the, no one was there at the assessor's office, so he originally submitted what he thought was the correct of butters' list. It was not certified. And then later, the correct certified of butters' list was put into the file. So there was no gaming of the system or anything of that nature at all. And indeed, as Sarah Alger admits, the butters did receive notice. I've attached copies of the certified mail receipts to my letter responding to the objection letter. So everyone did get correct notice. The other point I'd like to make is that the designer of this, Angus MacLeod, is a is an HDC member, he's the architectural designer, and he's also a passionate preservationist and has won awards for his preservation efforts. Both he and Marcia Fader, who is an architect with a degree in historic preservation, supported this and testified at the HDC hearing. As I said, the addition is very small, and Ms. Fader's report, which is attached to my letter of April 30th, 2025, shows that at page four, significant additions have already been made to the original house over the years, including additions that were made after 1987. This is a, an appropriate addition that is subordinate to the original structure. It follows all of the guidelines of building with Nantucket in mind. It's it's set back, it's quite small, it follows the design of the house very closely. Angus MacLeod purposely designed it that way so it would match the rest of the house. And I said it's only about a 13-foot extension from the house. It's quite small. I should also, I think Commissioner Oliver has already responded to the allegation that she voted with an improper purpose. She stated during the hearing at the HDC that the proposed project was a gable that was appropriate for the site and in keeping with the other additions in the neighborhood. The objectors are arguing that her side comment that she made, that the only reason she could see this project was a big deal to the objectors, was a concern for personal views, and that somehow shows she was, her vote was based on this. It was others, as she pointed out at the hearing, that initially raised the issues, the issue of views, not Commissioner Oliver. And it's clear from her full statement at the HDC hearing that her evaluation of the appropriateness of the addition was based on its scale and massing and the fact that similar additions had been allowed in the neighborhood over the years. That's all I've got. We admit that this is a, an historic building and a contributing structure. The only point I was making in my letter is that it is not an Underhill cottage. He did not design it. All of the cottages he designed were one-story structures that were designed to mimic Scott's old fish houses, and this is obviously not one of those. At this point, I'd like to introduce Marcia Brown, who is the owner of the house, to make some comments, if the Madam Chair will recognize her.
Okay, hang on just a second. I'm gonna take, I'm gonna take some remarks from Linda Williams and then Ms. Brown.
For the record, Linda Williams, representing the appellant. Several things that he said were not actually accurate. However, I'm just making one thing perfectly clear. Our client, who is the closest to butter to the West, never mentioned view, never mentioned tax implications. There are other people further down Pochuk that may have mentioned those things. So we did not mention that as our objection to what is happening to this structure. Marcia Fader's report actually supports my 60-some-odd-page report, where I did much more in-depth digging than she was able to do in her time. And if you look at the old pictures, there are quite a few going back into the late 1800s, this is a very unique-looking structure. It was one of the only structures south of Main at that time in the 1850s, 1860s, and it's a very narrow, front-to-back gable, and the profile is very distinct because it has that wraparound porch. And when you're looking at it past the old railroad train, there's one picture with a railroad train still in front of it, you will see how distinct that vis, that profile is. By adding a second floor, what constitutes sort of a cross gable, you don't know if the structure can support it anyway because he's not an engineer. We haven't had an engineer, structural engineer, to see if it can support the weight of that structure that's going on the second floor. But it completely obliterates the south side of that structure. I don't care if it's 200 square feet, 140 square feet. It obliterates the significant profile of that structure. So that's a couple of it. But it is an Underhill. It was one of the only structures on Sunset Heights, south of Main Street at that time. He bought it, and he bought the, almost the entire street all the way down on both sides. If you look at the old Sanborn maps, this structure is on the same lot as all of the other Underhill cottages on the north side of Pochuk Street. It was an Underhill cottage. It's in all the books I've researched. It's in the actual sketch of all of the Underhill cottages. It is noted as an Underhill cottage. So I don't care if it looks like the other Underhill cottages, which are very distinct. And just as an aside, it had movable pieces. So if somebody needed another bedroom, they would take it off one and roll it down and attach it to the other. Granted, it is not the same architectural style, but it started the whole Underhill cottage thing. And there were a lot of people, it was the artist, it was the actor's colony for several years, and it was all part of the same thing. I know all the people who lived in it and rented it over the years. It's pretty, pretty significant. So the fact that they're basing this on the fact that it's not a one-story structure like almost all the other ones are, and there are a few that have had second-floor pieces, like sleeping lofts, is bogus. It is an Underhill cottage. It does have a very unique profile. And the so-called demo plan, having been on the HDC for 20 years and the chairman during a time when Attorney Pucci was there, a demo plan on a historic structure, we are allowed to see the framing and what parts of the interior are going to be demolished if it affects the exterior. It's very specific on how far you can go in on a demo plan on an historic structure. But those are the things we want to know. They're cutting roof rafters, they're cutting all kinds of things on this historic structure, which will affect the outward appearance of this structure. So that is not a demo plan. It's on page 94 in your packets, but that is clearly not a demo plan of the type that we always require and should require. In addition, the change in this profile and this structure is so significant, whether it's 140 or 200 or 300, that it should be a unanimous support from the HDC, given what the discussion, given the demo plan, given all the rest of it, which were not submitted, that it should be a unanimous vote. The first time it came through in '22, we were there at every one of these things. It was massive, and it was the same individual, Angus MacLeod. Then he stepped back, and a different architect, architects took over. They never went forward with it because there was still, the opposition was still there, so they never actually went, continued on in 2023. And all of a sudden, the original, the original designer, who submitted something that was totally anathema to this structure in '22, is now back doing it again because he's a member of the HDC. And there is some bias. When you watch it, people are always complaining about how they possibly could do it. We have a Section 17 exemption here.
Linda, I'd like to ask you not to-
So I want to just point a few more things, but that's suspect to me.
Make an alimony remarks.
The appearance is a problem. And I know people can do it because we have the exemption under Section 17. But you look at some of these things that are in here from back then, Michael May, who everybody respected as one of the preeminent preservationists on Nantucket, and he's on page 14 of your packet, and he's absolutely opposed to the changes, and he also states that it was from the 1850s, the original construction.
So if we could limit our remarks to the actual application that was, that was decided on, I know it's in the packet, but-
And then you have the Preservation Trust letter, and you have a bunch of opposition. But we'd like it, at the minimum, to be remanded back to the HDC because it could have been three against it, two in favor. It could have been because one of the members that sat had no history of this application and wasn't necessarily aware at the time of the Underhill cottages, the significance, things like that. It could have been very well voted the other direction. But it should be unanimous, or at least four to one, on a historic structure where there's this much of an impact. But we would, at the minimum, like it to be remanded, have the demo planned on by a credible architect or an engineer to see if the structure can actually support it or it's going to cause more damage to the structure than what they're proposing, and have another discussion about its importance and the impact on the historic structure itself, as well as setting, because it was the only structure down there for a long time.
Okay. Thank you, Linda. Ms. Brown?
Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here. So I'm Marcia Brown. My husband, Jeff Clark, and I purchased 23 Ocean in 2014, and at that time, my sons were in their early twenties, marriageable age, and we thought they would be starting families, and we were looking for a place that we could possibly expand if grandchildren came along, and sure enough, they did. So that is why I want this addition. My relationship with the clients began when they bought the house in, I don't know if it was 2017 or 18. It was very cordial initially, and then it became a friendship. It became a very good friendship, where we worked well with this common path that we share. I valued this friendship, and they asked me to take down a 10-foot tree in my garden because it would improve their view, and I did it against my family's wishes because the friendship meant a lot to me. So we had a very good relationship. I was honored to be asked to marry them, which I did. I officiated at their wedding. And then that suddenly went, went very wrong when I told- And then that suddenly went, went very wrong when I told them that I was going to put this addition on. So at that time, they were very distressed. They said it would impair their view and to quote, "They wanted to be able to see the ocean from their pillow." They said it would reduce the value of their house. And then Glenn said to me, "If you do this, I will sue you until you have no money left." And so it stands.
So I'm not sure that's relevant to the appeal, yeah? This information about the relationship. Could you focus on the matter before us?
Well, the reason that I want it is because I would like room for my grandchildren.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so having heard everyone, I'm gonna get-
My client has to stand up. We would like Gregory to talk.
I really wanna, I wanna give the board an opportunity to interject if they have any questions, if they want to continue hearing from all the parties. Anybody have any questions at this point in time?
I'd like to hear from-
Okay.
Yeah, Gregory and-
Okay, great, all right. Gregory, if you could just state your full name for the record, please?
Yeah, Gregory Dunbar, and I live at One Pochek. First, I just want to talk about the Butter notification. While we now understand the notification was intended to be given, the initial application didn't list us as being notified. On top that, the notice was never forwarded to our current address, so we genuinely believe we've been left off. So this created some confusion for us and some concern about how transparent the process had been. It's also been said by both the applicant, as we just heard, and Commissioner Oliver, that our objection is based on concerns over obstructed views. That's simply untrue, and we've never stated that. Even if it were, this project as it stands would have little to no impact on the views that we do have. So this false narrative keeps being repeated over and over, and I believe it's being used to unfairly influence perspective. My real concern for us is protecting the character of this area of Scottsitt. Pochek Street is very unique and one of the few places left that still holds much of its original character. My husband and I see ourselves as stewards of these historic properties, and for us, preservation should always outweigh short-term, economically-driven changes because once these changes are made, they're permanent. There's no undoing it. If evolving family needs happen, there are many larger homes on Nantucket, many other places that are not historic homes that can accommodate those needs. Recommendations from the 2022 HTC review seem to have been ignored, and we still haven't seen that demolition plan that's been mentioned. This is a very old home, and the section intended for the addition is visible in early photographs of the house. It's hard to imagine how this structure could support the proposed expansion without proper plans in place. The HTC also stated that any proposal should be subordinate in height and mass to the main structure. That was from 2022, and yet these current plans demonstrate that the existing roofline is matching to the proposed addition. When guidelines are clearly set and then ignored, it really undermines trust in the process. I just want to be very clear, we are not opposed to renovation. We supported other projects by this owner in the past, but in this case, we feel it goes beyond what is appropriate for such a historically significant structure. The character of this neighborhood and authenticity of the architecture should be respected and preserved. So that's why I'm asking the Select Board to take another look at this decision, to consider not just the outcome but the process that led us here, and to make sure historic guidelines are followed so that Nantucket's and Scottsitt's unique character is protected. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reed?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Chair. Just a couple of points. First of all, with regard to the notice issue, in addition to the fact, obviously, that as acknowledged both at the HTC hearing and tonight by Sarah Alger, the applicants, who I believe had been monitoring what was going on with the project, or the appellants, were very much aware of it and were represented at the HTC hearing. But most importantly, with regard to the sufficiency of the notice, what we are required to give is notice to the address that's on file with the town as certified by the assessor. And that is an address in California that is where the notice was sent. If the appellants want to receive notices on a regular basis from the town and they're not at the address that's listed with the town, it's not anybody's fault that they don't get the notice other than themselves. And we have the return notice from, as it came back from the address to which it was mailed, again, the exact address that was certified by the assessor. Beyond that, I would simply say, you've heard a great deal here tonight, and the point is that, as you've been informed consistently by Town Council, the issue on an HTC appeal is not how you, as individual members of the Select Board, would act on this case if you were members of the HTC and were coming before you for the first time for hearing. Rather, it's a question of whether the action of the HTC in making its decision is arbitrary and capricious or in violation of law. And I've heard nothing tonight that would suggest that a finding that it was arbitrary and capricious, and certainly not that it was in violation of law, could be supported by anything that you have before you. And with that, I would ask you to overturn the appeal, sustain the decision as made by the HTC. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Okay, now that everyone has spoken, does the board have any questions while we're still in public hearing? Nope, no questions? Okay.
Val answered my square foot question.
Okay.
Very well.
Okay. So Angus?
Oh, there were just a couple of points that I wanted to clarify.
Just state your name for, full name for the record, please?
Angus MacLeod.
Thank you.
So there were a couple of comments about unanimous decisions on historic properties or structures. We, as HTC or anyone who's gone to a meeting, we review historic structures every meeting. Some of the, hopefully, most of the decisions are unanimous, but it's not uncommon for there to be a split board. There was a comment about the view down Pochek, and that was something that I demonstrated during the meeting with photographs looking down Pochek and from along Ocean Ave to show the visibility or lack thereof as you go the one-way down Pochek Street. But also, I want to make, make it clear that Pochek and the Underhill cottages that were designed by Underhill and built by Underhill were part of a number of developments that Underhill was involved with. Up by Wade cottages, it was called White's Development that he was involved with. There was Pochek. There were other areas of Scottsitt. He was quite an entrepreneur and a fascinating character. But the stretch along Ocean Ave has one type of architecture, and Pochek has another. And this definitely belongs in the Ocean Ave section. And during the meeting, I gave context photos of that, where this is actually one of the smallest cottages along Ocean Ave, but it's, it's, it's just a different animal. And so the guidelines that we go by are any proposals to the HTC for alterations. This followed all the guidelines of an addition being set back, being, you know, not dominating any particular face, leaving the architectural features that are character-defining, which I was careful to do. And just to make sure that I, sort of like a check, was one of the most revered architectural preservation historians on the island, I consulted with Marcia Fader. And I, I'm, I'm, my professional life and my personal life are focused on Nantucket architecture and preservation of its, its character. And so this, this is not something that I take lightly, and I appreciated the HTC's approval of this design. And as far as Pochek Street goes, I've been involved on six different houses along Pochek Street, and a number of which of those projects were recognized by the Nantucket Preservation Trust in awards. So just to say, this is not something I take lightly, and I appreciate the HTC's decision on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Angus. Okay. Again, any questions from the board? This is a public hearing. I think we've heard everyone speak. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak, offer any additional information in the public hearing? Okay, seeing none, pleasure of the board regarding the hearing itself? Okay, I have a motion to close the public hearing. Second by Don. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Discussion or the pleasure of the board? Any questions for Town Council?
This is, like all these hearings, we hear a lot about perhaps missteps in procedures, which you could, I'm sorry, which you could expect with the HTC, given the volume that they have to deal with. We hear a lot about different historic views. We hear a lot about opinions of the architecture. But again, we have to go back to whether this is arbitrary.
Don?
Yeah, I mean, I would agree with Malcolm. We have a very high bar that we have to go to, and I was looking for, was there a real procedural issue? But the notice was provided. And the documentation is generally up to the HTC in terms of how deep they want to go into the demolition plan and so forth. Those were kind of the avenues that I thought might make it necessary to send it back. But I'm not, it didn't quite come to fruition that those would be a reason to, once we went through it all.
Okay. Tom?
Yeah, Don pretty much covered what I, what I was thinking, which was, was the presence or lack thereof of a demolition plan as laid out by those who testified enough to consider an HTC remand? And I'm a little foggy on that, but Don, I know you served on the HTC for a long time and have experience in that. So if that's, if that and other mitigating factors aren't enough to consider a remand, these appeals that we have are always interesting, and I feel like sometimes we get into this position of, don't want to supplant the HTC's purview. That's, that's not our job here. And the standard of, as George always reminds, or Attorney Pucci always reminds us, the standard of arbitrary and capricious is quite high. And I, not seeing that after reading the file and hearing the testimony tonight, my questions were really what Don just brought up, which was, is there enough for a remand based on process reasons? And I would like to hear the rest of what you, of what my colleagues think on that.
Now, did you want to?
Yeah, I think it's all being said. It's a, it's a high bar. It's, you know, has to be whimsical or, you know, arbitrary and capricious, it's hard. You know, I did sort of hear, well, we would consider a demo plan, you know, more complete demo plan, but I don't know that that's, you know, at this point, I'm not sure that that's necessary. I mean, I think it's necessary to do the job right, but I kind of trust that they will. So I, you know, so I don't see that as a necessity, so.
I, for me, the Butter notification looked like it was inadequate, and then it's clear from the record that it's a, it was a record-keeping issue, not a matter of Butter's notice being done properly. I did want to ask Attorney Pucci that question about the demolition plan. Obviously, it is not our place to supplant the decision-making of the, of the HTC, so it would seem to me, while we might think that's a good idea, it's probably, it's not our, it's not in our purview in this appeal to ask for that because that's their authority. Am I correct in that, Mr. Pucci?
Yeah, yes. If you, first of all, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is George Pucci from Town Council's office. You know, the demolition plan is an issue. The Ms. Backus described that, you know, she did make that recommendation. You could draw the inference that the majority voted to issue the certificate of appropriateness because they either felt a more detailed plan wasn't necessary, or they, you know, took that recommendation into consideration and approved it anyway. I didn't hear Ms. Oliver describe, you know, their decision-making on it, and I didn't hear anything from her about, you know, that they required a more detailed demolition plan. So it's definitely an issue of relevance. Everybody has stated the standard correctly, that the HTC has, you have to find that they're arbitrary and capricious or otherwise contrary to law. Having said that, if, if the lack of the demolition plan or the inadequacy of it was presented to you and you found it, you wanted to credit testimony to that, that it could possibly lead to a different result here, in my opinion, you could remand it for that reason. But I, I'm not commenting on the evidence that was presented to you tonight. It did not appear to be something that the board members have found to be a compelling issue. So I, hopefully, that answers your question. But it is, it is a relevant consideration.
Okay, all right. So hopefully, that helps my, this board decide as they're thinking about that piece, as Don mentioned and Tom confirmed. Is there any further questions or is anybody ready, prepared to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to uphold the HTC and deny the appeal.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll make that note. I'll have a second.
Okay, so I have a second from Malcolm. Okay. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Okay, that is unanimous. So, okay, so we're done with that item.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks to everybody who took the time this evening to speak with us.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thanks. Thank you, everyone out there for listening. Have a good evening.